Awesome, welcome everybody. I'm so excited you're here today. I'm your city councillor, Sue Andrew-Bois, and I'm so excited to be hosting tonight's town hall. Co-hosts are myself and Speaker Joe Chikarchi from the Rhode Island House of Representatives. We'll introduce more formally in just a second. As I've announced, we have a lot of council staff here today who I'm so grateful for for helping out. We've got Sam, Mark, a bunch of other folks hidden everywhere. And we're also joined by Mayor Smiley. If you want to wave, Mayor Smiley, I'll do it there. And I'd also see Sam Zerrier, Senator Zerrier, Rep. Kizlak is here as well, and a few other distinguished guests. I'm sorry if I missed. Oh, and we've also Rep. Morales here as well. So, thank you all so much for coming. I'm going to just walk us through how this is going to go, and then I'm going to turn it on over. So, we're going to start with this introduction. The Speaker's going to speak for a few minutes. I'm going to ask him the first few initial questions, and then it's going to be open to conversation and questions from y'all. I'll call on folks, and the lovely Sam from the council office will be walking around for the mic so that everyone can hear your questions. And we're going to wrap this up just about seven o'clock. Speaker's very busy, and we'll make sure he gets to his next meeting. I can hang out a little bit afterward to answer any city-specific questions you might have and just chat afterward. So now, I'm very excited. Now that all the legislative are out, I'd say a few words of welcome to Council Speaker Joe Chikarchi. So when I talk with neighbors, our housing crisis is a really top priority. The Speaker has spent many years with this top legislative priority of Rhode Island House of Representatives, and has been working on really, really strong solutions to address this crisis. But I was also really excited for him to join us today because of the way he operates as Speaker. He's been extremely collaborative, insisting on bringing all relevant folks to the table, and pushing for solutions that actually work. And he doesn't shy away from the hard issues. I think most of you guys know that I'm a climate advocate by day. Well, I'm a climate advocate all the time, best, but professionally. And one of the first bills that the Speaker's shepherd had through was the Act on Climate. And I remember watching it on Capitol TV as it was moving forward, and the floor debate was pretty spicy. And he let that debate go on for as long as it needed to, which I appreciated. But then, once it was done, it was time for a vote. It wasn't "Let's push this off." It's "We're going to make some hard decisions, and we're going to take a vote on this." And it passed, and because it was your first bill to pass as Speaker, we were all watching separately because of still COVID times. We had a bunch of press texts, like, "Yes, I'm ready to vote!" along with my neighbor colleagues. So I know Word Three, you know, we're all about getting things done, and a good policy and getting good results. So I'm just really excited for me to come over this today specifically to talk about housing. So thank you, and welcome to Word Three.
Thank you. Absolute pleasure to be here. Absolute pleasure being in Providence. I spent the entire day today in Providence. I was talking to Mayor Smiley, and we did groundbreaking and ribbon-cutting at the same time for two projects, two housing projects. But before I get, actually, just general remarks I want to make, and I really like to get into questions. I'll talk about whatever you want, any topic. I really want to thank Councilwoman Sue Andrew-Bois, because in these times that we are in, there are people who are saying, "Do not engage the public. Do not go to town halls. Do not talk to people." They're professional agitators, and those people are afraid, are afraid to face the truth, and afraid to face the consequences of their actions. And this woman is anything but afraid. She's, I have just recently met her. Absolutely yes. Absolutely yes. I just met her earlier this year, and let me tell you something. It was instant collaboration. She says she has a passion for good causes, and also is very polite and respectful and also collaborative. It is a pleasure to be here tonight, to share the stage with you. I look forward to many great things to come, and wherever the future goes, I hope you're part of it. Because she is very lucky. You and Ward Three, let me tell you something. You won't have Sue Andrew-Bois for a long time, because I think there's bigger and better things in this lady's future. So with that, let me tell you, that's right. I really want to thank the City of Providence, and it starts with the leader, Mayor Smiley. More than any other city and town in the state of Rhode Island, Providence has embraced 47 housing bills that we've passed since I became Speaker. They have embraced the reforms and made housing easier, more affordable for the people of Rhode Island. I have three things what I want to accomplish with housing. Production, production, and more production. And when I talk about that, what I mean is production at every single level. Market rate housing, workforce housing, affordable housing, low-income housing, and homelessness. And they all have their different challenges. But Mayor Smiley, and the city councillor, and your Providence delegation have supported me. And let me just tell you, you may sound like, "Oh, they're supporting Speaker." Everybody does. No, they don't. And let me tell you, there are a lot of communities that push back, and push back very hard, and they're becoming more and more creative. Sometimes they push back on the merits, sometimes they use creative ways, and sometimes they personally attack people who want good housing policy. But that's okay, because the harder it gets, the more committed we are, the more committed I am, the more committed my House of Representative colleagues are. This problem is not going away. And by the way, if somebody doesn't like any of these reforms, great, I'm all about it. Come and talk to me, let's work on it. But my first question is, what would you do? What are your solutions? And you know what I get inevitably? We don't have any. We don't need any. We don't want any. Leave it alone. Everybody wants affordable housing, but nobody wants it in their backyard. But fortunately, there are groups, good neighbors, many other advocacy groups that are being formed, that are working with two commissioners that we formed in the House. People say, "Where do these ideas come from? Where do you think about them?" I actually don't. People think that they come from me. I embrace them, and I use the Office of Speaker to support them and push them through the General Assembly. But we have two commissions. We have actually many commissions. We have two primary commissions that support good land use policy. The Affordability Commission, that's chaired by June Speekman. She's a state representative and a college professor at Rashia Williams from Lauren. And she is pushing very good housing policy to support affordable housing programs in this state. And we have a Land Use Commission chaired by Tom Della, who's a current planner in Johnston, was the planner in Providence, was the planner in Central Falls. And Tom gets it. He's representative of big, medium, and large municipalities in the state. He understands it. They are made up of about 25 extremely talented, very bright advocates from the cities and towns, from the building community, from the environmental community, from the city planners, the town planners, all walks of life, from the Round Foundation, from the United Way. And they come up with good ideas, good solutions that work. It's very open, it's very transparent. I welcome participation, they welcome participation. And then, once they come up with those ideas, they present them to the General Assembly. We do a review led by Lynn Ramboni, our policy director. She's outstanding, she's extremely talented in many areas, but she's really embraced housing. And then we introduce them to the General Assembly for another round of collaboration, input, and transparency. They go over to the Senate. The same thing happens over there. If we're successful, and if we're in sync, we pass legislation and present it to the public. And we're not always in sync. That's the truth. Sometimes the Senate goes along with me, sometimes they don't. Sometimes they modify things. Sometimes we can live through, sometimes we can't. But we work together sometimes. It's even hard working with the partners at the State House. Took us three years to pass ADU legislation. ADU is accessory dwelling units. And that was a number-one priority for AARP, number-one nationally and locally, number-one priority for Rhode Island College Democrats. Why? Because it was housing. It was housing where people could age in place, and it was young people coming out of school with school debt, could have a place to stay close to their parents, but yet independent. And we worked very hard and passed the Senate by one vote. So I'm very happy with that. That's how housing policy is initiated by my leadership. I'm proud of that. I know some of them are controversial. I know some cities and towns don't like them. I know some planning boards don't like them. I certainly know a lot of planners that don't like it. But what I asked is, I said, "Fine, give me your ideas, give me your collaboration." The ones that do are few and far between, and we were able to work with them. And I'm proud to say this year, with new leadership at the legal cities and towns, the legal cities and towns not only attended our press conference, but are supporting this year's housing package. And that may sound pretty benign, but it was a very difficult accomplishment. I want to congratulate Mayra Silva from East Providence and Randy Ross, who are the new head of the legal cities and towns, who have been working with us and continue to work with us. And we're going to look at a lot of good housing legislation that makes sense for the state. We're going to continue to do that. Beyond that, you know, that just touches on one area that I know that is the bill of the headline of this particular hearing, but there's so many other things happening in state government. It's happening in the federal economy as well. And we're going to do our very best to protect Rhode Island. That's our job. We take it very serious. Not a day that goes by, not an hour that goes by, I hear from a representative what we can do for health care, for housing, for environmental policy. You name it, and we have a bunch of really hard-working, creative legislators. And I'm sure there are as well in the Senate, who really want to work hard every day to make it a better place to live and raise a family in Rhode Island. And that's what we're all about, and that's what we're going to continue to do. Beyond that, I will say I'm happy to talk about any other topics you have. I'm honored to be here. I thank you all for coming out on a cold and rainy day to listen to me, and I appreciate it. And as long as you keep it wet, I'll keep coming back. Thank you, Sue.
Awesome. I'm going to start out asking you a few questions, and then we'll open it up to everyone else. But I promised if Word Three turns out, and you guys can really fill the room. So thank you so much for all coming out on this rainy, cold Monday. You shared a little bit about the housing package that you've supported and that the league came up to support this year. Can you talk a little bit about what you're trying to tackle in this year's package?
It is a continuation, as I said before, of production, production, production. But it's looking at it from a lot of different ways. It's how can we make housing more affordable? How can we give density bonuses when there are utilities that support it? And this is a misnomer of a lot of people who are against the housing package. They say, "We're forcing housing." You're forcing housing, Speaker, on our community, and nothing could be further from the truth. So the natural impediments to housing remain. We didn't change any DEM regulations. We didn't waive anything or relax anything to make it easier to build. We didn't take away any capacity to say yes or no to a project. Every project that is approved or not approved is decided on a local level, by the local zoning board, the local planning board, the local city council. We don't say yes or no at the State House to any project. We leave it locally. So this year's package extends that, looks at creative ways to make it easier for private developers to come forward and build. Because we have a whole other public component through Rhode Island Housing and the Department of Housing, which I'm proud to say that I sponsored and funded. We used 25% of our op money originally. That's a quarter of a million dollars to jumpstart it. We created a tax, a transfer tax on homes that sold above $800,000 to create a revenue stream for affordable housing. We've done a lot of good things to fund it. We have passed overwhelmingly by the voters of the state, a bond, $120 million. Single largest bond in the history of Rhode Island for housing, passed with nearly 70% of the vote. So it's resonating. There's a recent polling that was published a month ago that shows housing remains the number-one issue. It's the number-one issue. And people say to me, "Speaker, why did you choose housing?" And I said, "I never chose housing. Housing chose me." It is the issue of the time. It's the issue that needs addressing. And quite frankly, I was looking around, and nobody was doing that much of that. We were kind of like playing around the edges. We had a couple of great nonprofits who were supporting it with not any real funding. And when some funding became available, like maybe $5 or $10 million, there was a big scampede of nonprofit developers trying to get a piece of that to supplement and build a capital stack. Capital stack, as we saw today, is a combination of state money, federal money, sometimes city money, sometimes grant money, foundation money, to help offset the cost of housing. And that's what has typically been done. But now we have actually real tools. We have a department that's funded. We are making significant investments, sadly, in our homeless population, which is getting... When I say sadly, it's not that we're helping them. I'm proud to help them, I'm happy to help them, but it's a growing population. As rents go higher and higher, homelessness goes higher and higher. And I don't know how some people feel about that, but that's disturbing to me. And not every one of those people are without a job. There's a lot of issues going on there, and we passed in the House a program called Pay for Success. And that is a program that not only helps people get into permanent housing or temporary housing, but also gives them supportive services to help them. Because some people who are homeless have other issues. There's a lot of mental health issues that are associated with that. There's a lot of substance abuse issues. So we need to give people the help that they need to make them productive, to get them into permanent housing, and to get on and live a good, long, productive life. And that's what government's all about, in my opinion. It's about helping other people who need it. I mean, I know that's not popular in Washington today with some of the Republicans, but it doesn't change me, it doesn't change who I am, and it doesn't change our mission as a community, is to take care of one another. And that's what we should do.
I'll ask you one more, actually, tomorrow night, and then we're going to open it up. But can you talk a little bit about what you're seeing as some of the biggest obstacles to addressing the housing crisis, and how municipalities can help?
Clearly, a great question, great question, Councilman. The biggest problem, unfortunately, is a misnomer about what is affordable housing. Some people think affordable housing is low-income housing. And that's not necessarily the case. There's all different levels of affordable housing. It's called adjusted gross income, adjusted income from the area. What's affordable in Barrington and on the east side wouldn't necessarily be affordable in Warwick, or Kentucky. There's a formula that comes out yearly, and it's adjusted, and that's what affordable. But generally speaking, think of affordable as your nurses, your policemen, your firemen, your city workers. The people who build housing should be able to afford to live in the houses that they're building and working on. Your plumbers, your electricians, those are the people who are affordable, everyday working people. When I first ran for office, I walked my neighborhood, I walked every door. I think I walked like one and a half times, and I went back to people like this. And I would go to a very nice home, and they would, I'd have the voting list to provide. And it would say, you know, husband and wife, intelligent age, they were in the 60s and 70s. And it was a beautiful home. You know, parts of my district are very poor, other parts are very wealthy. And I was in the very wealthy area, and the very poor areas as well. And the poor area, they were talking about housing, that there wasn't enough housing. And then I went to the wealthy part of the district, Butler's, and people were also talking about housing. So I went to like three houses in a row, and they were talking about, "We need a new housing, we need a new..." So I said to the third house, I said, "I'm just curious, with this beautiful home, you and your husband, Seabird, retired. I mean, both retired, we love our home, and I believe in it. I'm just curious why this interest in housing, and I'm glad you're interested about it." And they said to me, "It's about our children and our grandchildren. We don't want, we want to be able to be a part of their lives as they grow up, and they have children of their own, and we don't want, that they can't afford to pay a house around here." I was, I wasn't Speaker, I was just rep then. I mean, I was just Joe, I wasn't even rep the first time I ran. And Joe, you don't understand, we want to be close to our children. And our children can't find a high-paying job, and they certainly can't find a house. They can't afford the down payment. They're coming out with student debt, or they can't afford a mortgage because they don't qualify for it because they have student debt. So it resonated with me that it was a popular issue, and it was affecting a vast amount of people, not just people who need immediately housing, but their relatives and their family. And housing is an economic development issue, it's a jobs issue. If we're building housing, we're bringing in Amazon, and Jack Reed, to his credit, is bringing Noah to be headquartered here in Rhode Island. Those people need housing. They need jobs. And this is a very significant problem. I was in Middletown, I was in Newport and Middletown on Friday, and I met somebody who complained about Middletown. And he was so elated that we are pushing for housing there, and he said, "We need housing." And he's pushing about 160-unit development in Middletown on a main road that has water, that has sewer, that has capacity, and it's a large parcel of land. He's going to put a bubble park on one side of it, he's going to put housing and mixed use on the other side of it. And he was so thrilled that people at the State House were recognizing it and pushing it. He was running into a lot of resistance, but he was continuing to address these issues with plantings, and changing the color, and landscaping, and screening, and relocating, walking paths, that it mitigated. And the opposition, the second and third hearing, and ultimately, there's still more hearings left in that process, are understanding that they need housing, they look at the benefits of it. And the biggest thing I can say to solve the housing crisis is to communicate. Because when you actually communicate, you're never, ever going to win everyone over. You have to go with that realization from the beginning. If you think you're going to walk out with unanimous approval, it doesn't happen in politics, it doesn't happen in life, it certainly doesn't happen in housing. But you can win over the majority by explaining to them, by helping them understand, and then by working with them. They can understand that their voice is heard, their concerns are met. A lot of people say concerns about traffic in school. And if you're building on a main road, that traffic's already there. And if you look at our school-age children, it's going down dramatically because children are expensive, and people are having less and less children. So there are a lot of factors that go into housing. But the biggest problem, biggest impediment, to answer your question, or the very old way of getting to the answer, is miscommunication, misunderstanding. And if people can actually sit down and talk and collaborate, you will see that they will gradually understand it and accept it more because it's needed. And you're building a home for people. You're not putting in a business, you're not putting in something that makes noise, you're not putting something that's late at night, you're putting in housing, just people just like you and I.
Switching gears a little bit, I know you've also been instrumental in the Life Sciences Hub that's been created in the last year or so. Can you share a little bit more about the Life Sciences Hub?
Thank you. A very interesting idea. You know, we talk about me and the needs of, you know, the times that we're in right now. But at the same time, we have to look a little bit beyond the immediate to see what the future is. And the future is bioscience. It's worked very successfully in Massachusetts. And when I say Massachusetts, I'm not just talking Kansas Square or Harvard. I'm talking about Mansfield, Massachusetts, in Worcester. Worcester has created a bioscience that throws off $1 billion of economic activity. The same thing in Mansfield, Massachusetts. It's amazing to me that it has been so successful in Massachusetts, and we have the ingredients. So Neil Steinberger, at the time, was the head of Rhode Island Foundation. I was just a Speaker for a short time. I remember going in Mass, sitting in a big conference room where everybody was at different ends of it. And he said, "I have this study that we've done, Speaker, and it's going to take a commitment of money, but we can launch a bioscience here and we'll be successful." I said, "Well, what are the ingredients that we need?" He said, "We need a first-rate hospital system." And with Brown Health, we can't even, we have that. Now, they have their financial issues, but the quality of care, whether doctors and the nurses, are just as good as you get anywhere in Massachusetts or anywhere else. We need great, strong academic partners. We have that with Brown University, Brown University Medical School, and URI. And then he said, "We have to have a state that's interested in partnering. And if you don't have all three components working together for success, it'll be a failure. Don't bother doing it." And he says, "If you can give me a commitment that the state will do it, share, and continue to do this." They gave me a blueprint to formulate a, basically, a quasi-agency that would get it done. And everybody on that board, including Neil Steinberger, serves for free. Again, quality people. We wrote some legislation so we could get some top-notch talent from around the country that couldn't come to Rhode Island for board meetings. So at the time, we were allowed to do it by Zoom, by executive order. We wrote that into the legislation. We funded it with $45 million. I will tell you, it is becoming really successful. It's exciting. They just recruited a company from Massachusetts to come here in Smithfield called Organ Genesis. It's a company that makes artificial skin and wound therapy. They're rating several hundred high-paying private sector jobs. They got their last approval from the town of Smithfield last week on a three-to-two vote. Three Democrats voted for it, two Democrats voted against it. But it passed, and they were able to begin that. There's a lot of activity. I can't get into the details, but I will say, I think it's public.
That will go to if it's healthcare, or education, or RITDA. When reality is that it's simply not enough, we cannot tax our way out of the cuts and proposed cuts coming out of Washington. That remains a viable option to raise revenue. I will keep an open mind, and we will look at where our revenue numbers come in around the second week of May. And I have refused to make a commitment on that bill because I think that's, in my mind, a lot of ways, it's urgency, rate glass, this is what we needed, the revenue, and we need to look at that. But we also need to be competitive with our neighbors and tax structure because one of the biggest things that we are using to try to keep Hasbro here in Rhode Island, there's a lot of things going on about Hasbro, and I don't know where they stand, especially now with tariffs from, you know, the Republicans in Washington, if they're going to leave, and there's tariffs from China, and it's a whole other issue. But we're using in our promotion to keep Hasbro is that we don't have the millionaire's tax. So that's what the state has been proposing to them. But I can't take that off the table, and I have to say it's probably more viable or more needed now than it has been in the past.
Thanks for that question, Joe. I saw more hands. I think I saw in that corner, and then I won't ignore this side of the room, we'll come over here next. And while you're walking out of the house, well, we were talking about housing at the earlier part, I went and met Bob Azar and Tim Shea from the Cities Planning Department, they did an amazing job with the Cities Comprehensive Plan, many of you were here for the public meetings we did with Bob and Tim, but really increased density and did a lot to support housing and so much more in the Comprehensive Plan, who guys did, you know, worked on that, so just want to thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, uh, Italian province planning department, that's a credit to the mayor, and his team that he's put together, is very knowledgeable and very supportive, but here's my request, tell me other planners, please, in the state, tell me what you did, you're doing and have done and are doing in Providence, and they shouldn't fear it. And my favorite one, from one planner in, I think she was in Charlestown, not, so she goes, "I don't want to do this." I said, "Why? It's too much work." And that's, I think Steve Alquist had that in one of his stories somewhere, if I'm not mistaken. And, and I said, "Well, it's too much work, it's, it's, it's too, there's too many people who need housing, especially homelessness." Thank you guys for all you're doing, thank you.
Hi, Howard Scholman, General Internist, I work in Providence, I live over here, and I just want to remind you that just three days ago, Anchor Medical Associates, which was a primary care group, closed up in Warwick for financial reasons, not only financial reasons, but they couldn't recruit people here to take the place of the doctors that were retiring. Twenty-five thousand patients were scrambling to find a new doctor, I'm getting, our group is getting lots of phone calls, 3% of the Rhode Island population suddenly got told they don't have a primary care doctor. Last year, the Senate had 25 bills in a package to kind of cure healthcare, didn't happen. And this year, there's another package they've tried, there's a bill going through the legislature to have international doctors who haven't had any training in the United States work over here without getting training a year or two. There's another bill, like Interstate Medical Licensing Compact, to have teledoc doctors, it's mostly for that, to have someone to call. It's a financial problem, and I just want to remind you that, I don't want you to come up with an answer right now, but I, I think it's, it's a major problem in terms of provision of healthcare.
Thank you, Doctor. I, I know it's a problem, and I just, you know, my dad was a doctor, he's still with us, he's retired, he's 99 years old, and I know, our point is, I know when Anchor closed, I think they sent an email and sent to everybody in the email, "Call your state legislator." And that's okay, that's our job to communicate, but it's a very complicated, people are saying, "Why are reimbursement so low? Why are reimbursement so low?" And, yeah, I don't know either. And to his credit, David Sisley, former mayor, former congressman, runs the Barat Foundation, did a study. Study came out in the end of the last legislative year, and what it said is that roughly, our premiums, our premium dollars, are the same in Massachusetts for healthcare, just about the same, maybe a little bit less, maybe a little bit more, depending where you get a family plan, and where you go, which they, but our reimbursement rates are so low, and why is that? Well, if you read the study, or some of the study, you'll see that we are out of cover a lot more procedures. And I try to explain to myself, I'm, I am guilty, just like all of my other colleagues, a couple of years ago, I passed a bill mandating coverage and no cost for mastectomy supplies and mastectomy, um, equipment that was needed, that there would be no copay. And what happens is that gets absorbed by all of the other people, so we, the General Assembly, I'll take myself included in this, we passed a lot of mandates to cover, whether it was EpiPens, or whether it was this procedure or that procedure, and what happens is, there's only so much premium in the dollar, and if you look at Blue Force, just as a bellwether, I think they lost about $90 million this past year, and they're, they're trying to sidle for a factor, they're trying to sell their building to raise their reserves right now. So, the reality is that we have to balance, we have to figure out what we have to, obviously we have to increase our reimbursement rate, not only on the state side, on the private insurance side, as well, there was a bill last year that would have increased reimbursement significantly, but it also would have tripled premiums for everybody in this room for healthcare. And, and that was primarily proposed by South County Hospital, and that went over like the, you talked about the Senate package, so a lot of those things you've talked about, especially the things that are, were under very strong consideration passed that don't have a financial impact. A lot of the Senate package that, well, last year was all good intentions, and we had duplicates in the House, too, they cost money, they cost a lot of money. And when I get a budget that doesn't have a lot of money in it, and in matter of fact has holes in it this year, I can, that's a whole other story for another debate, but there's, there's problems in the education budget, where there's deficits that have not been disclosed, there's significant deficits in the budget. There's a plan to merge medium and minimum security of the ACI for $6 million savings this year, and $12 million annually, that is wrong, that's, that will not save, that will not yield any money, and that has been abandoned. And I can go on and on, so I have to first get to zero to pass a balanced budget before I have any extra money to spend, but I will tell you, I can tell you almost certainly, and I'm having, what is, you know, Sue said I'm leaving here at 7:00, because I've got a budget book with my colleagues, and I will almost certainly tell you that I believe, you know, in spite of people wanting money for education, people want money for public transportation, people want money for housing, that most of my colleagues, and probably most of the Senate will say, that we need to put more money in the healthcare system. Let me just finish this, because I'm on the phone every day, every single day, seven days a week, Saturdays, Sundays, with Attorney General LaRosa, and we're very concerned about Fadmer and Roger Williams. I know it gives the mayor great consternation because they're trying to go from a profit hospital to a nonprofit, and that's significant revenue shortfall for North Providence and Providence. But the alternative right now is those hospitals will close, those, never mind the anchor, which may cause people to look for new doctors, those hospitals, those jobs will be lost, and those properties, I don't know what will happen to them, but, so, the only plan on the table, they're in the bankruptcy, under the jurisdiction of a district, federal district law in Texas, if you can believe it, right now is in the hands of trying to get these, this profit hospital turned into a nonprofit hospital. They're borrowing money to finance the deal with the asset forgiven. Attorney General LaRosa give him credit for holding back $50 million, which, that's what's left of it, that he held from the prospect dividend payout, he held back $50 million, that's going to go into this purchase to keep these hospitals alive in the short term.
Can I just suggest that I'm not asking you, that you pay, spend one more dime on healthcare, not one more dime, just get it redistributed better to the primary care doctors who don't have any leverage, don't have any lobbyists, people speaking up for us who aren't part of the hospital system, have a little more, larger cut of the existing pie.
So, I will tell you, I'm very interested to hear from you, I'd like to meet you after giving my card, you email me some ideas, because I'm very open to them, I really am, and I thank you.
And Howard, I think I have the contact info, so if you don't connect, I can.
Please, absolutely.
And I promise to go to this side of the room, so I'm going to use a lobby. And Mackenzie's been walking around with a sign-in sheet, so folks want to be on the newsletter list, I send out newsletter every two to three weeks, sometimes folks are like, "How'd I found out about this hearing that's happening or this thing?" Just sign up for the newsletter, we'll make sure we find out about things, but go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Jones, and I'm just curious about the affordable housing and plans to convert commercial properties to housing, unused properties, maybe Memorial, properties downtown, the commercial sector is very soft, and the likelihood of those buildings being refilled by businesses is very small.
So, excellent question, and I will tell you, we have active legislation, it's in part of our package this year to do that, there's also other legislation, other good housing legislation that's not part of our package, but we've done that to a small degree with called adaptive reuse, that was part of a previous bill that we packaged, where if you look at an old factory, or an old school, or an old hospital, like particular Memorial, that already has water, and sewer, and high density, and we purpose that, we've run into some resistance from the communities, some communities don't want it, they feel like they have a shrinking, shrinking commercial tax base, but you make a good point, because since COVID, things have changed. If you look at, just not even downtown Providence, but all across the country, offices are re, we've been reevaluated, reassessed, the workforce is working from home, the worker is much more empowered these days than the employer, and it, I want to work remotely, I want to work at home two days a week, three days a week, so the, the offices that are still existing in downtown are now having workstations, where Sue's going in on Tuesday and Wednesday, I'm going in on Monday and Thursdays, and we're sharing a workstation, and the rest of the time, they're working from home. You make a good point, it's under, I would encourage you to please come to the State House and testify on that legislation, and we're working very hard, we're going to continue to work on, on housing legislation. I want to give a, a request to my good friends in the Senate, that the House has the housing package, and if anybody in the Senate wants to duplicate those, Senator Zaria, Senator Mac, oh, we'll welcome your assistance in the Senate to shepherd those through. And earlier this year, we passed a pallet bill for the pallet homes to expedite that. It was ridiculous to me that they were being delayed in the middle of December, when people were literally freezing to death, that we didn't have, didn't fit the zip, or the code, and it's, not to anyone's fault, but when you have the ability to fix it, we fixed it right away in the House, it's one of the first bills we did this year, and we're going to continue to do that.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head, the bill number?
This young lady, if you talk to her, she'll give it to you, I don't, like I said earlier, there are 1,100 bills, and it's 1,100 plus, and God bless them, they keep coming in, another 20, 30 a day come in, and it's just hard to keep track of them.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
How about right here, and then the yellow hat? I'm looking over just to make sure we don't die, I haven't seen this ago.
Hi, I'm Gilley Bell, I live in Providence, in the Summit area, and I'm an environmental activist, among other things, and I'm concerned that with all the very important issues that we've been talking about tonight, and all the chaos that's coming out of Washington, that the environment's going to get kind of left behind, because it just feels like we can kick it down the road, do it next year, do it next year. And there are many important bills pending before the legislation, one of them being Representative Kissler's Building Decarbonization, excuse me, bill, which I'm sure you're aware of, and there's also a couple of bills that I think are very interesting, because they're, they're towards a solution of, well, how do we all do all this stuff, there's so little money, and there are ways to fund environmental efforts, Environmental Superfund Bill, and there's another one, I'm just wondering where you stand on the urgency of the environment, realistically, I know you can say, you know, I'm all for the environment, but how urgent is it this year when there's so many other competing things?
So, I will tell you that I'm extremely proud of, and I recognize, first of all, thank you for your advocacy, I mean that sincerely, I recognize that, and I recognize that the young lady sitting next to me is probably one of the premier advocates in the state, and where is Priscilla?
Priscilla's over there.
Hide away, she used to be advising me, but she left me, Mayor Smiley stole her and took it to Providence. But, look, I understand how important it is, and that's why I just brought on Janet Coy, to help advise the House, we have a lot of areas, we have a bottle bill, Producers' Responsibility Bill, we have coastal resource reform, we have, you know, Rebecca, she's here, she asks me every day about her decarb bill, so we want to work through them, and this is what, I'm proud of my environmental advocacy, in several ways, not only what we've done with the Act on Climate, it's the first, most significant piece of legislation that I did in the House, and I did that because I wanted to send a message that we mean business, that things have changed, and I'm just committed to do that. We passed significant PFAS legislation, that banned PFAS in food, in water drinking, we passed lead pipe reforms, so kids weren't drinking lead pipe in our school systems, and in their homes, for that matter. I'm, I'm proud of what I've done, I'm proud of what we're going to continue to do on that, I'm proud of bringing Janet Coy, look, it's, it's clearly important, in spite, or maybe even paramount importance, because in Washington, while everyone's talking about tariffs and everything else, the EPA is being gutted, and, and them philosophy in, in the Republican administration is drill, baby, drill, and I get it, and I understand, I know, I know Superfund legislation's passed in two states, it's passed in New York and Vermont, it's being litigated right now, I'm watching it carefully, I'm looking at that, the bills you've talked about, they're all under consideration, we're looking at ways we can move things along, but equally, he's not here tonight, but I really want to give a shout out to my partner at the State House, Chris Blazewski, he is very concerned about the environment, yes, in Michigan, first of all, he's a great person, great father, great husband, great partner to me, but I'm equally proud that Chris and I stopped a high heat bill that came out of the Senate that was heading for the fast train, we came out, so it's not just always what we do, it's what we don't do, so we've, we've done that as well, and I'm proud, and I stopped, I, I stand on that record, and I think that record is second to none, as some speaker, and I'm proud to do that, and I'm proud to run on that again. So, it, it takes time, these are not easily understood issues, and they're not easily to get done, but they're important, and just because they're important doesn't mean we don't do them, or that hard, we work just, just as hard, twice as hard to get them done. So, I thank you, and I don't know if you guys know Hank Webster, he's another environmental skeelee moose, these were my kitchen cabinet of people, they've all graduated, going on to bigger, better things, so I brought in the, the best I could get, and that's Sue in the box, so thank you very much.
And before you go to the next question, I do, Bill knows this, but just so folks know, we are already acting on a lot of that legislation in Providence where we can, so one of the reasons I ran, ended up running for council, was watching us, the last council be unable to pass a building benchmarking ordinance, which seems just so basic and obvious that we just want to know what the energy use of our commercial and our new school buildings was, and it seemed like, ah, we can't do this, like, what can we do? And so, the council unanimously passed that within the first year, being on council, I sponsored that along with Councilwoman Campney and Wood Two, who wanted to join us tonight, but it's not feeling well. And then the next year, we followed it up by requiring all new school buildings to be carbon neutral by 2040, and the city's doing an amazing job implementing these already. Director DeLa Cruz, who I'm, like, the world's biggest fan of, gave a presentation to the Special Committee on the Environment in Brazilians that I created and chair, talking about the great progress, they're already beginning to implement this legislation, we've already benchmarked the city's buildings, and then we're moving forward with all electric construction in our schools, and making really good progress on decarbonizing all of the new school buildings. So, we're not waiting for the state, and we would like the state to act very much, because there's more places up in Providence, but Providence isn't waiting, we are, we're taking, taking matters into our own hands, and Priscilla and her team, like David Rogerio, our MRT Administrator, are just amazing, and show that you can do it, and then, Priscilla, I'm putting you on the spot, but I think you said it was like $30,000 a year or something to do benchmarking, plus half a staff person, and so it's not, it's not expensive, and it's going to save a lot of money, so we're going to go yellow hat.
Let me just say that, it's not fair, because, I'll explain to you why, because in Providence, there's a strong support for, for those initiatives, when you get to the State House, I have to represent other, other different communities, 39 cities and towns, and in some of the rural parts of Rhode Island, other parts of Rhode Island, it's not quite as priority as it is in Providence, but I congratulate them, I mean that sincerely, for taking the lead, and that's important, and it shows, just as Sue said, that it's not that expensive and not that difficult. Sometimes we try to, you know, a lot of the bills that come in, they want a lot of stuff, and I say, if you break it down, we can move it along in pieces, so that's what I'm trying to do, so Howard, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Brandy McKinnon, I live on College Hill, I have two questions, one is, your committees, are they doing work on changing the building code, like, removing the second stairwell, things like that? And the second question is, I live in the densest part of Providence, what are you doing to enforce the laws to make Johnston, and, you know, Lincoln, and all these towns who are fighting us, to infill, because we can't do it alone? There is no more space in my neighborhood, I would love to put more, but we need help from other cities.
Very good question, what I will tell you is, I'll give you a couple of examples, and I think the answer comes from people in this room, so I know a lot of people want me to drop a hammer down and, you know, penalize them or refuse aid, but I'd like to, you know, and I'm not afraid to do that, and I'm not saying I won't do that, but I'd like to try to educate and bring people along, so they understand it, and let me give you a couple of examples. In the last election cycle, the town of Narragansett passed a bunch of town ordinances that basically negated what we did at the state level. In the last election, the town council people who voted for that were wiped out unanimously by the voters. I said to you, the bond earlier passed significantly by over 70% of the vote, in Coventry, not exactly the east side of Providence, in Coventry, there was an anti-housing candidate who was against the entire quote-unquote "Chakarchi" housing package, right against Lou Reptakis. Lou overwhelmingly beat him. In Warren, June Speekman was running for reelection against a town council person, or a planning board person, I'm not sure, but somebody, some official in the town, who was very anti-housing, June Speekman won overwhelmingly. So, the people are speaking when they vote, and I think that you, we need to do that, and I think we'll see what happens. Look, Johnston is involved in litigation right now, I met with the mayor over the weekend to talk about it, to try to say, "Mayor, is there a middle ground? Is there something going on?" There's another big development going on in Smithfield, and I, I talked to the solicitor this morning, and I said, his name's Anthony, I said, "Anthony, find a way to get housing, even 50% of this housing is better than no housing." And to his credit, he's the speaker, that's exactly what we're trying to do, and we're getting close to that. So, I'd like to try the collaborative approach, and education approach, and I think when people actually see who moves in, and what these units look like, there's this preconceived notion that people who live in these houses are different, or bad, or poor, or criminals, or whatever, and it's very common, you see it in Washington, is a false narrative about the facts, or the truth, or what's bad, and I'll just use an example about vaccines, but, you know, I don't know where you stand on it, but, you know, my father was a doctor, I got every, much to my chagrin growing up, I got every shot, every vaccine that was known to ban, but it, it's a false narrative that goes on, it's the same false narrative that goes on for housing, and hopefully, we can change that by getting people to understand why it's so important to create housing. And it's working in poll results, it's working in statewide bond results, it's working in local elections, and people who fight against these projects, they will have to face the voters, and that's the best medicine you can tell any politician. Thank you.
Looks like we have time for maybe one to two more questions. Aaron's handling them so fast, we're going to go Aaron, and then we might have time for one more. Oh, Councilman Roy is going to wind us off.
Great to have you here, Speaker.
It's great to be here, thank you.
And I think so many Democrats right now are really hungry, or even desperate for leadership, or we've got fascists coming after everything we care about in Washington, and we're seeing a lot of blue state governors really step up in leading the fight back against Trump and their horrific attacks, and I think we're not seeing that from Dan McKee here, or I don't know, too many people who see him as stepping up to be the leader we need right now.
Amen.
Not asking you to criticize a colleague, but I'm wondering, you know, what's the leadership that you would want to see? If you were, if you were in that position, how would you be seeing that?
Sounds like a loaded question, but, thank you. Look, I, I understand, everybody is different, everybody has different styles, I don't, I want to do what I can do as the Speaker of the House, to be the best possible Speaker I can, and protect Rhode Island, to protect Rhode Island who are getting hurt, veterans who are losing benefits, people, young people who can't get vaccines, all the bad things coming out of Washington, I want to protect those people as best as I can, and I want to help doctors get adequate reimbursement rates so they stay in Rhode Island, and then they'll go to Massachusetts or Connecticut, and I think you stand up and you lead by actions. For example, I am proud, you talk about what's happening in Washington, let me tell you, I'm proud that we in Rhode Island passed marriage equality, that we in Rhode Island, as I am very much on a personal basis as well as a professional one, I'm also equally proud that we passed reproductive healthcare, that's recodified, we're we pay, we codify equal access for abortion coverage, so poor women and state employees can get coverage for their healthcare, we prioritize and passed the Obamacare in state law and codify that. So, whatever happens in Washington, we've already acted, and we're going to continue to act when we can, look, I'm not afraid to fight with anybody, but I want to fight a fight that's worth fighting, I want a fight that we can win, and I think the record of the General Assembly, and when I say that, I'm not bragging about the House, because I can't do it alone, I need the Senate, and I, I need them to be partner with us, and we've stood together, we've passed a significant amount of gun safety legislation, we're going to continue to work that, we're going to continue to protect Rhode Island as best we can, and I'm not afraid to stand up to anybody on any issue, from the federal government to anybody locally, or any misfit or malcontent, anti-housing advocate, and they're out there, and they, and I believe I paid the price personally, in many ways, don't want to get into it here, but anyways, my practice, my office, and all kinds of, you know, bogus accusations, but just because they're made, doesn't mean I stop fighting for what I believe in and what's right, because if you don't do that, then you don't belong in elective office. If you want to be the middle guy, you don't belong in elective office. And if you want to speak, or people expected us, stand up and lead, and I'm prepared to do that. Thank you for that question.
And our friend from the north end, Councilman Roy is is going to take us home.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Speaker, Justin Roy is, Representative Ward Four, thank you for comments in Providence, and I sincerely say this, you have been a breath of fresh air compared to previous folks who have taken up the speakership. I just, going back to housing policy, it's my view that we do need to increase the housing supply, we need zoning reform, but we, in my view, though, we also can't rely solely on the private market to solve the housing crisis, and so, here in Providence, we are seriously considering rent stabilization as that third tier. Under your leadership, would you support a preemption law to prevent cities from pursuing rent stabilization, such as what California did in 1995 when they passed Coastal Hawkins?
I'm not really with it, if you give that to me, I'd be happy to look at it, I don't know what that preemption you're talking about, but I would know, and not because he's there, that Dan Denver has been hounding me about a public housing developer for four years, and we have done a study, a feasibility study, that shows it works, we put it in the bond, it's $10 million, I, I see a developer here who's very interested in pursuing that, and I agree with you, we cannot rely solely on the private sector, so we share that goal, Councilman, but what I will tell you is, that I think that we need to create more production, more production, and we have, in the last four years, through bonding, through raising the tax on high net sales, through Opera Money, we have made the most significant investment of public funds in housing that has ever been made in the history of Rhode Island. We still have only scratched the surface of the problem, but we'll continue to do that, and we need to, and I think a public housing developer, if done right, now, keep in mind, nowhere in the state and the country has done it, now, there's been a success in Maryland, Montgomery County in Maryland, but, and this is what I challenge Dan Denver, and all my good friends that reclaim, if you do it right, Rhode Island can be the leader in the country, you find the right land, the right developer, you, the investment has been made, it's been proved by the voters, it's just waiting to be initiated, unfortunately, like a lot of programs this year, it doesn't get done as quickly as I would like or would want, and maybe not with a sense of urgency that you and I both share, but there are alternatives, and I'm open to alternatives, so email me about that preemption, I'll take a little look, and I'll give you an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, and you should know, Dan and I are scheming on getting a public developer to develop on North Main, so we're trying to bring that $10 million back here.
It's, no, the $10 million is, can go anywhere in the state, so if you.
It's going to be here.
If you like, I hope so, I hope so. This has been an incredibly rewarding experience, I've enjoyed this, and I will leave you all with this passing thought, to please stay involved and get involved, and it's more than just coming here and talking with me and Councilwoman, it's really showing up at the State House, sending an email, calling your state representative, your state senator, be involved in your local government, because that's what really matters, you know, Tip O'Neill said, "All politics is local," I like to think all the solutions are local, so we're going to continue to do our best. I thank you for this great opportunity, and if you have me, I'll come back again someday. Thank you very much.